...North Huntington Board of Commissioners Special Meeting for Thursday, August 12th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Role call, Manager Silka.
Commissioner Stumpf.
Here.
Commissioner Atwood.
Here.
Commissioner Blasco.
Here.
Commissioner Zona.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner Goss.
Here.
Commissioner Higas.
Here.
Can I, please, stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If any residents would like to speak tonight, they can sign the Book of the Podium. Let the record reflect no residents' input for tonight. Work session discussion topics, Manager Silka.
Okay, first is going to be the garbage bid specifications that we have currently out. What I'm going to do is I'm not going to go over much on these because I'm going to let Mike Turley kind of pick it up as he literally was doing garbage from day one of his employment at North Huntington. But what I will say is that the way this transpired, we didn't have a lot of time to be creative, we didn't have a lot of time to do much other than get the specs out because as we met with the, called the industry providers, they need at least three solid months, they want five months to be able to get up to do our garbage. So, we got the specs out and I'm going to let Mike kind of go down through some of the particulars of this, because this is a little bit different bid because the industry is changing.
Okay, thank you. Yes, there are a lot of issues with garbage collection these days. Some related to pandemic issues, some predate those, some relate to, but there's just a lot of issues and some of it's apparently driving costs too, like a lot of what we're hearing these days. But anyway, if I could go through real quickly, and there's a lot of issues in garbage, so I don't want to try to go through too much. But basically, we put a bid specification together with what we do now, pretty much the collection service we have now, it's a baseline. And that's an unlimited service and a four-year agreement, which is what we usually request. And we have a fifth-year option year, although we usually don't execute that, but we could. So it's a four-year base bid, unlimited garbage collection, like you have, includes recycling, household hazardous waste collection at no extra cost outside of your fee, and a yard waste collection manually, six weeks during the year. So that's pretty straightforward. The industry is, so there were a number of changes, but they weren't substantial as far as the, what we'll call the manual collection. But the industry's moving towards automated system. You probably saw this in a lot of other communities and they've been pushing this really for a number of years. And we did not pursue this in the past, but it really needed to be an option in some form this time because I believe we would not have gotten bidders or maybe gotten one bidder. So, a lot of them either aren't interested in, are not nearly as interested in the way we do things now. Part of it is their cost, the automated is more efficient, it's having enough people to do it, being able to buy enough trucks and parts, and they're having all sorts of issues here. So anyway, for a lot of reasons, automated is going to be the future at some point. So we need to put together specifications.
(inaudible) about Governor Gray?
Excuse me?
Where they have a meeting on about Governor Gray?
This is the Board of Commissioners meeting, so it'll be discussed later this evening, right here.
Where's the Governor's, Governor's Room?
Right there.
Okay.
So, the automated system, without getting into it, is what it's, automated system where you use special carts, those carts will be paid for through a monthly cost added on to your collection over the course of the contract of about four years. And we're going to get a price for that too, and we'll just see, we'll come back to you in September and compare the different options. We do expect increases in either service, in either service for a number of reasons. The senior sticker program that you're probably familiar with was one that, obviously, we keep with the manual, with the manual system, but we also decided we wanted to keep it with the automated system too. So this is sort of a semi-automated system where everything would be automated except the yard waste collection, which would be manual, and then the senior sticker program would continue. But the recycling would be automated. So this was just a way that we worked out, we're trying to automate, but there's a few issues and that just seemed like the best option for us. Anyway, that's kind of an overview. I did want to point out that we always believed that our current rates were below market and we have plenty of data to suggest that, and so we would expect to see an increase just getting a new hauler. And then we have some of these other issues too, so there may be some public concerns or complaints that we may get just because of that. So, that sort of outlines generally where we're at. If you have any questions or specifics, I'll be happy to discuss them. I think that we'll be bringing, almost positive, we'll be bringing it back to you in September after we get a chance to analyze it, price and issues with the different options.
Any questions for Mike?
I do. Mike, currently, the bids are sealed, is that correct?
Yes.
When will the bids be open?
September 2nd.
Okay. So, right now, what that means is, is nobody knows whose bid, what, who put a price on anything, is that correct?
That's correct.
The bids are not due until September 2nd, so they're still out there.
Okay, okay. All right, great, thanks. Appreciate it.
You know, but I will say that, again, we only have two people who can bid for, basically in this area, that can bid for our jobs, is Waste Management and Republic, because they're the only two that are large enough to service us.
Mike, I did have one question, what you were talking about, that our current bidder came in a little under market value. If I remember correctly, it wasn't about like a $10 to $8 difference, I think, from Waste Management to our current provider, I think for a quarter, if I remember correctly?
It was about $5, it varied from year to year a little bit. But I used, a rough number would be about $5 per unit per month.
Okay.
So, in the grand scheme, all the total units in the years, there was actually, in the millions, obviously, for the automatics, 13,000 units, but it was $5. So we, you know, I don't want, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, but it was about $5 more a month for the previous time it went out for bid.
The other bidders were at least $5, $5 higher, and that was in 2019. Correct. Without some of the other issues that we're bringing up.
All right.
So this is what we've been a little bit concerned about.
Thanks.
Mike, can you address a couple things? One, how much was county hauling going to be come January the 1st? What was the rate that they were going to charge so that the public knows that? And, second of all, the seniors are buying the stickers because they don't put a lot of garbage out. And it seems like our seniors are going to get stuck, not to use a pun, but it seems like they're going to get stuck with these stickers. And they got stuck with the stickers the last time. Is there anything that the township can do about that?
Well, the first part of the question is, I believe the number for this year is $16.95, so around $17. And I think the other bidders for this coming year, 2022, were around $22, or 2022 wants $22, wants $23. The other, the senior sticker program, is one that's proven to be a little difficult for us for lots of reasons. So, the short answer is, I would say that we had a lot of problems with this program, being abused, not by everybody, obviously, but by enough that we were not, people were not using the stickers, were not putting them out, and we had a lot of discussions of doing away with the program. We decided we had to make some changes to it, would be the right thing to do, so we required a minimum purchase of 24 stickers a year. That's two bags a month. That's, we don't want garbage in people's house more than two weeks, so we felt like that was fair. There was no provision for returning stickers, we didn't have really concerns with that. The concerns were always geared around, we want you to buy the stickers for those that were abusing it. So, the problem with returning stickers is you actually could just not use them and then return the ones you had to buy. There's just not a really good, the accounting of this is not great, because when they go to collect the bags, they're taking the bags whether there's stickers on them or not. So we just have a lot of practical issues with this, but we want to keep the program because it's very popular for the seniors. So, we didn't put a, there's no issue with not, of having stickers except when you actually switch a hauler, those few times you switch haulers. That's only happened one, two years ago for us. And what we do is we spend these last few months trying to let people know, only buy what you need through the end of the year. So we didn't really need that, but we really don't want, we, we just felt like that was going to create a lot of issues to have. If you have a few stickers, it's not a big deal. We feel like that's the minimum cost to be part of the program, there's a minimum to be part of it. Now, if you have 50 extra stickers, either you're not using your stickers, or maybe there was an error and you bought them and you didn't realize it, there was some communication issues, whatever happened. We would discuss with them, if there's truly a significant number, they would do that. We don't have anything in a contract to do that, but I think if there was some isolated real significant problems, we would discuss it. But we don't, we don't really want to get into, you've got three extra stickers or five stickers and they're a buck eighty-nine, and, you know, they have to return the money. We don't have that provision. But I would say this about the senior program, and this is the best bargain going. We get the most complaints about this, but you get to buy, way under market value, one sticker, in this case, now this price is going to go up too, but $1.89 to put a bag of garbage out. And you also get recycling included for that, you get household hazardous waste collection with that, and yard waste collection six times a year. And you only got to buy 24 stickers in a year to get all that. So, personally, I'm not overly sympathetic if you have a couple of extra stickers. Now, I know others might feel differently, but that's just my take on it. If you have 50 extra, I think we might try to, but we don't have a provision for that. But bottom line is, this program's a bargain, but it's a little bit problematic to administer.
Thank you for telling the public that. And maybe we could even put out a little notice, you know, on social media to use up those stickers by the end of the year.
Yeah, I expect we're going to do that, probably, probably by the end of the month.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anything else from Mike?
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the bid that we received for the HVAC replacement at the townhouse. Just a little, we received the bids on July 28th, and we did receive two bids. East-West Manufacturing was the low bid at $747,000 with RB Mechanical at $827,400, which basically shows that, you know, it is a good cluster to look at. And also, you know, the engineer's estimate was $900,000 to 1.1 million. This started in, you know, this process, this time started in the spring, late fall of last year. We did engage McKenna McCrea through a competitive process to do the evaluation, they came up with the evaluation, did the specs, and then put it out for bid. So this is the bid that is, you know, that we did receive for the HVAC. And I will say that currently, the HVAC, we're having it recharged right now, no less than every two weeks to keep it pumping. So it is, I mean, so we have probably, you know, close to a six-figure maybe repair, or we have the replacement. And as, you know, as we talked before, and it's, it's in the agenda a little bit more, but you know, this is definitely, you know, an explicit, you know, approved use of the Rescue Act funds because it does improve air circulation within a public building. So I, you know, our recommendation, the recommendation of our engineers is that it's a good bid. My recommendation to the board would be to place it on for consideration at next week's meeting.
Any discussion?
Jeff, when are we going to get into the nuts and bolts about what are we, the township, building, or what are we getting for $747,000?
What we're getting is a new, smaller chiller that actually is sized for this area, we're getting air handlers, we're getting duck work needed, and we're getting circulation chiller, you know, circulation and the proper controls for the building. So we're basically getting a new, a new air conditioning and chilling system.
Is there a warranty?
Yes.
How long?
I believe the manufact, I don't have it in, I mean, it's probably at least a 10-year, you know, manufacturer's warranty on the parts.
What about the warranty on the work?
Well, the work, there's a bond for 18 months on the work, and the work is inspected as it goes through.
Right.
So, and then, you know, the engineers will, you know, approve the work at the end of the contract.
Okay.
And that's included in our, the base bid that we had at $26,000 for the engineering firm.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, let me get the next one up. I did ask the directors to be here today because we're going to, as the board wanted to go through numbers a little bit more, more before, you know, we actually get to the actual budget process. I do have the latest workup of our revenue or of our expense side. And I'll tell you, it's, throughout the last five years, we've cut, 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 and you'll see that, you know, our actuals through 19 and 20 compared to what's budgeted is not much different, you know, at our base operation. So, you know, there's, I can tell you, there's really no, there's no service cuts in these numbers, but, you know, and the numbers are probably as tight as we can get them without going back and either eliminating a program or eliminating some type of service. So, what we'll do is, we'll kind of go through it down the line, the directors are here, and to answer any questions within their department. And what I'd like to do is, you know, probably do this, we did revenue last month, expenses this month, come back next week, or next month, kind of have another facilitated discussion as you get to digest some things. And then I will work through September to have the official budget presented in October, which is 30 days quicker than normal, so we can start the budget process to see, you know, how we're going to go through that. So, in going through the budget, we have governing bodies, elected official salaries set by code, social security, dues, travels and training, that's basically, you know, a pretty tight lineup, that's our Pennsylvania Municipal League account, and any travel and training, also our Westmoreland County Chamber membership is in there, and any trainings that the board may want to go to throughout the course of the year. As you know, we did drop the local chamber membership, which was $690 this year, as opposed to the $225 that we're paying for the Westmoreland County Chamber. So we did eliminate a chamber that we felt we didn't get much off of, as opposed to the Westmoreland County Chamber that has a little bit better networking opportunities for us. Going into general administration, with administrative salaries, I just put a placeholder for the non-union salaries at 2%. That is simply just to put a number there. Senior project engineer, I bumped that up a little bit for ours, since we don't have a township engineer, you know, and Bob Robinson is doing a little bit more work on our development side. The township engineer, I did, in this draft, I eliminated that line item and the corresponding benefit line item for that, just at this blush, just to see, you know, how it works out, since we weren't successful in our last venture. Clerical salaries, I'm holding that at this year's, at this current level, as we know, we're currently negotiating the ASME contract. What I did is, in each department, I did put an administrative intern in for basically 13 weeks at $13 an hour. I think if we use interns, we, college and graduate school interns, we can get a lot of our little work done that we, you know, we wouldn't need to have additional staff time for some of our, especially helping our administrative personnel and our directors. So that's just, that's a new lineup. Anything that's yellow, you'll see something that's put in. So I put one of those in parks and rec, police, administration and planning and zoning. Workers' comp, fringe benefits, that's all the payroll taxes, healthcare for the administrative department. And again, I don't have the renewals, I won't get the renewals for our healthcare until late September or more likely, you know, into mid-October. Administrative clerical overtime at $4,000, that basically trends, you know, through the last four, couple of years. Postages and supplies, postage keeps going up, we try our best not to use postage, but unfortunately, government works in a paper format. We have to publish things, we have to send things out, and, you know, we're kind of at bay at the mill. And also, you know, we generate a lot of paper. We try to cut it down, and we have cut it down, but that line item is, you know, ticked up a little bit for inflation. Recycling program expenses, we kept that at $5,000. If, we, you know, we may want to, we would eliminate that if we do go to a automated collection, that'll be, we won't have to buy any more containers, that's what we use that for. Miscellaneous, that's kind of, kind of a catch-all for anything that slips between the cracks, if we have to pay some, you know, premiums here or there, that'll go into there. Township audit is $15,000. That's, that expense is going to stay pretty solid. Also, you know, we are going to have another audit required as we spend over $770,000 in a year of federal funds, which we will, from the Rescue Act, but we should be able to charge that back to the Rescue Act funds, worth of revenue replacement, because we'll have to have a single audit, which is a little bit more in-depth and a little bit more, and a lot more costly than our standard audits. Consultants' fee, I jumped that up a little bit this year because we're either going to do one or two things next year, we're going to hire a consultant maybe to help us work through some MS4 issues, or we do need to start working on a codification of our ordinances. For a township our size, we don't have a codified ordinance where you can actually see what our ordinances are. All of our ordinances are in a PDF file and not searchable, not online. This is half-done. I mean, it was started a few years ago, went into a drawer, we've kind of pushed it off, I pulled it off to 2019, didn't put it in 2020, but this is something that we really need to have for efficient operations. So that's, that consulting services kind of went up for that consultant. The engineering fees, I bumped that up to $115. I think we netted some of the money from the township engineer salary, that's kind of anticipating using a consulting engineer on a more frequent basis. The solicitor's fee, I kept the same at $115,000. There never seems to be a lack of lawsuits or a lack of need for legal services. Economic development at $5,000, that's a line item that we have in there, and that's one line item that has came down because of the use of electronic newsletters, Facebook, you know, we're not putting out the print and sending out the print as much as possible. So we brought that down in the past, and then, you know, we're, we still need to have money because sometimes we need to have a study done, we need to have a plan done. So we want to keep that in there as a funded line, a line item. Arbitration hearing, this is one that always kind of bites us, you know, and that's simply a product of working in a union environment with, under Act 111, we have, you know, provisions for Labor Council and arbitration hearings, we need to have that pumped up because we generally do spend, even on non-contract years in that lift. Advertising and printing, printing costs for newspapers continue to go up even though circulation goes down. The state is working, hopefully sometime they're going to allow us to post where people read things online, on the web, on our Facebook, you know, or posting here. I mean, you know, the cost of ads are cost prohibitive for using, having meetings, when you look at hundreds of dollars or thousands for a public hearing, it's an expense that we have to eat, and it's kind of something of a bygone era. Maintenance and rentals, we have rental contracts, maintenance contracts for some of our office supplies. Our computer system, $65,000, we used to budget in the $100,000 there, with the upgrades we've done last year, in the last two years, we're able to keep that down. We have our maintenance, our computer contracts come out of there, but also our hardware and software. Managers' dues and subscriptions, contractually, I have ICMA and APMM, which actually, I've dropped APMM, which is the Pennsylvania Municipal Manager, I didn't see value in that organization, so I did drop that, but I do have my International City Manager Association membership, which is a contractual membership. Dues and subscriptions, that is for the assistant manager. We have cut a few, the storm's coming. We've cut a few of our, you know, superfluous subscriptions and memberships to get it down to what we actually need. Administrative staff training, we, you know, we cut that line item down from when we were going to conferences, we're basically trying to go to no more than two conferences a year. However, professional development is something that is important to us, and is important, you know, for the township, for us to be able to grow and continue to bring back the new idea. Commissions on real estate, that, or commissions for the tax collector, those are the 4% commissions, the 5% commission that she gets on collecting all of her other taxes other than real estate. Capital, fire, water fee, light fee, those are there. The fringe benefits, that's basically social security, that's taxes. And supplies and expenses, we've cut that line item down, but, you know, we are responsible for providing everything that she basically needs to send our taxes and collect our taxes out. And we're, we keep a tight line on that item to make sure that if it's something that needs to be split two or three ways, it is split two or three ways between the school and the county. And, you know, we, like I said, we brought that line item down $13,000. The building and plant, that has the custodians' wages, fringe benefits, you know, minimal overtime. Supplies for the townhouse, that keeps us, you know, with paper products, cleaning products, you know, mop heads, everything else that goes on to keeping the townhouse, supplies for the garage, same way. Small tools and minor equipment, that is, as my directors can tell you, that is probably my least favorite line item, because sometimes I think that that line item becomes our tool room instead of taking care and keeping track of what we collect. So we constantly try to bring that down and make sure we're taking care of the tools that we have and keeping track of them. Telephone system, we do have our cell phones in there and in our, and our data plans, and as we increase our connectivity, you know, we have less reliance on our landline phones, but more reliance on our internet access and cell plans. Utilities in the townhouse, that's self-explanatory, that keeps creeping up every year. Utilities garage, basically the same thing. Repairs and maintenance of the townhouse, I took $5,000 off of that, I think that that is going to go down probably substantially because probably the majority of our expenses for the townhouse maintenance is going into the chiller and the air conditioning unit. I mean, we're spending about $3,000 to $5,000 of, you know, a month on that, keeping it charged through this, through the summer. So I think once that goes down, we're going to see a lot less maintenance, but, you know, I don't want to short that line item until we actually see the benefit. It's sort of just like when you buy all-new cars, your maintenance lineup for vehicles go down because you're not nickel and diamond. Repairs and maintenance of equipment, it's kind of self-explanatory, and the capital improvements there. If we lose chairs, if we lose something, you know, microphones or anything else in there, we want to make sure that we have a little bit of money there. Police department, that is our, you know, our highest line item, and I promised the chief that I wouldn't sell him out on this, but we currently have budgeted for 28 officers. There we go. And contractually, you know, that's, the police chief's salary and the police salary are contractually governed right now, and that does show the 2% increase for this year, for next year under the contract. Workers' comp, fringe benefits are, you know, go along with that full complement. The overtime, you know, we budgeted $290, and last time, we're hoping that if we can get full complements back, our overtime goes down. However, you know, as I did tell you, you know, we are down a few officers right now on some longer-term workers' comp. Dispatch wages, that is the wages for, you know, the current six dispatchers, workers' comp and fringe benefits for, and overtime for the dispatchers. Again, there's a police department intern to use to try to catch up on some of the, you know, work that an intern can do to help administratively with, through the police department. K-9 compensation expenses, they're pretty much in line of what, you know, we pay to keep our three dogs, you know, working and certified. Uniforms, that's a contractual uniform allowance for our police officers. Dispatchers, you know, that's a high line item now, but chances are that is going to go down drastically as we go through negotiations. The vests, the vests kind of go on a cycle, we purchase them and then they're reimbursed, but the reimbursement doesn't come down until the next year. So, you know, that's kind of, sometimes we go up, sometimes we go down. Right now, you know, we're going to need to buy roughly $7,000 worth ballistic vests, they wear out and they can't be reused, if somebody leaves their, you know, you can't share a vest. Office supplies, you know, police, again, they, they generate a lot of paper, do a lot of handouts over the window, so, you know, we do have office supply expenses. Vehicle fuel, that's probably our, you know, biggest unknown in all of our departments right now is what our fuel cost is going to be. It seems like, you know, it's shot through the roof over, over a dollar a gallon since the beginning of this year. Now, this year, you know, you may see fuels a little bit down, that is because we're down officers and we're doing a lot less travel. And in two thousand and twenty, you'll see it was down. That was because during the COVID era, we shut down patrols and we were just responding. So we didn't, we didn't have the patrol fuel used. Vast car, that's, you know, the contract, what it's going to be contractual to have all of our vast car units certified and be able to be used in court to write tickets on. Defensive equipment ammunition is surging right now as we go to non-lethal arms. You know, the, the practice balls are very expensive and, you know, so for the training, for the defensive equipment, it's going to be ammunition and non-lethal ammunition is going to be the driving cost there. Community programs, we kind of changed that. They used to be called affiliated programs, but that is our, our junior police academy, our citizens' police academy, carving with the cop, you know, our community reach out. Miscellaneous is miscellaneous. Repairs to vehicles, I mean, over the last four years, we've really brought that line item down to, is the fleet is continuing to rotate. And also we are doing probably eighty-nine percent of our maintenance now in-house with our mechanics. So instead of spending a hundred twenty dollars for an oil change, we're spending, you know, thirty-five in consumables for oil change with our forced labor. Minor equipment, you know, that, that small line item that generally spends in there. The blood alcohol tests, unfortunately, the blood and the, the drug tests are kind of surging. We get these back usually through restitution and court costs. However, we have to pay for them upfront and we, you know, before we can get anything back. Civil service commission, that's a line item that, you know, we're, we're going to be hiring probably towards the end of this year, early next year. And basically what, that's going to be advertisements and, you know, some legal fees for the tests. Radio maintenance, we're in the ten to twelve thousand dollars in there over the course of the last couple of years. Extra batteries, you know, that, it just comes into it. Equipment maintenance contracts, we've added another maintenance contract for the plate, license plate readers that are on. We assume that contract, which is roughly about two thousand dollars for the year between that and the internet connection. So those are, and we, and I will say that Chief Rizzo did very well to pare down a lot of old maintenance contracts as the administrative department did. We had, we were renting fax machines for like ten years at four or five hundred dollars a year, which we can go buy one every month and still be ahead. So, you know, we did pare down a lot of these contracts in the last three to five years. The dog officer, that's our animal control officer. We will be rebidding that in October, but, you know, I, I don't foresee it being much less than what it is right now. Seminars and trainings, the police have a lot of mandated trainings and we have specialty trainings. So that line item, we feel is, is an important line item to keep at sixteen thousand dollars and to go. And there's no general fund capital purchases for the police. Do you have any questions for Chief Rizzo on, as we're going down through right now? Fire departments, the workers' comp that we're required to pay, that has come down dra, that has been coming down drastically as our claims are coming down. Hopefully when we get our, this year, it'll be the same way. So we're budgeting fifty-five thousand for that to be in the safe range. Gasoline for the fire departments, again, that's, that's a line item that's, that's going to be up as fuel costs are going up. And the Fireman's Relief Association, that's a pass through of the, from the foreign fire insurance relief check that we get on the revenue. So that, whatever that is, that is a direct pass through. We can't spend that. I have like two weeks to get that to the Relief Association. Rescue eight, their workers' comp for their volunteers, we pay at three thousand dollars. Their gasoline, you know, we, we bumped that up a little bit as it's coming, you know, as we did all gasoline utilities. You know, they're in the fourteen to fifteen thousand dollar range and kept the seventy-two thousand dollars contribution to rescue eight. So that is the public safety portion of it. The planning and zoning department, what I did is I did add that, we talked about a planning technician to kind of backfill the associate planning director's position that was held by Ryan Fonzie as he went up to the director. We've been running for roughly two years now, you know, one person short and it is creating a workflow problem. So instead of coming up with an associate planning director, we kind of reformatted it to kind of an entry level planning technician position for somebody probably fresh out of college to kind of get up to speed and then go on to bigger and better things. But it'll give us the ability to utilize that labor. Clerical wages is contractual. Again, the planning and zoning officer. Workers' comp, fringe benefits, I did include the fringe benefits for the planning technician. Safety shoes, planning commission expense, vehicle ma, I mean, there's really not a lot in this area in planning and zoning, you know, outside of salary that they spend, dues and subscriptions, lean costs, training and refunds of building permits or anything else that has to be a refund, that is on the, on the line item. Any expenses, any questions on that expense?
Yeah, Jeff, I, I didn't get to it fast enough. It's not only with this last bit that we read off, but also with PD. What's this fringe benefits? What is this?
Fringe benefits is our healthcare, the-
Why do they call it fringe benefits?
Well, because, because that is a fringe benefit. It's, it's healthcare, what we do, we roll in, it's healthcare, it's all, it's all the other medical insurances, vision insurance, taxes, social security. That is where all the payroll expense, all the fringe benefits are paid out of. Instead of having a budget with twenty-seven line items, in the past, I've just rolled into one line item.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Jeff, I have a question on that, on planning and zoning. What's the professional services?
Professional services is the plan review. Whenever, you know, like we use KU resources right now to do the plan review. That's the bulk of it and probably eighty-five percent of those are refunded. We have a line item that corresponds to, because that's charged back to the developer. And then every now and then we do need to have a consultant come in and take a look at, you know, helping, take a look at our ordinance or do a little bit of GIS work or something like that. But the majority of it is plan review services. Emergency management, these are pretty much standard line items, supplies, materials, the miscellaneous, the equipment that they want to buy. I haven't got, you know, a list yet. I am meeting with our coordinator on Monday. Dues and subscriptions, we cut that down. And training, we've really cut that down is, you know, our, our current trainer doesn't want to go to all the conferences that our previous coordinator went to. So at sixty-nine fifty, as you'll see, we were as high at one time at fourteen thousand. So we've drastically cut that line item, realizing that, you know, we have, we have to have a certain level of preparedness and equipment and materials. However, if, if we do go into a disaster, you know, there's county resources, we can buy what we need when it's time to buy it instead of stockpiling. Because, well, one, we don't have the room and you, you can never prep for everything. School crossing guards, that, that's the salary at eleven dollars an hour, social security and any supplies. Public work, you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask, on the school crossing guard, can we consider giving that back to the school district?
That would be a board directive. I mean, that's, there's nothing in code that says we have to provide school crossing guards.
Thank you.
I believe when that was started, that we, we were paying that. Weren't, wasn't the school putting money into the local parks or something in, in return for us doing this, the, the crossing guards?
I, I believe in, you know, somebody, somebody a little bit more knowledgeable, that that was the beginning. However, that program is kind of withered away that we provide the crossing guards, but we don't have anything coming back into the programming.
Yeah, that's my point on that. I think that's a good idea is to give it back and if we can, and I, I think we should look at that.
Ron, if I may, even when, with the crossing guards, so when there's a call off, the shift sector cars go and cover the call offs too. So, you know, so they call in and say, yeah, we can't be at Broadway or we can't be on Morris Avenue or whatever that day. So, or it could be a couple of days. So we, we end up sending the sector cars up there to cover the, the guard details too. So, you know, we are doing even a little bit more on top of, we're paying them to be there, but when they're not there, we're sending police officers.
Yeah, and that's taking your guys off the road.
Well, it is, it's, yeah, I, I totally understand it, but, and if we would, that would shift to the, to the school district. I, I, I don't know if that would relieve us from our, our shift responsibility. That would be something we would have to discuss with the district. Would they be responsible to send us a replacement to cover that? Because right now, that's, that's kind of how that works. So there's a little bit more detail to it.
Yeah, I think the proper way would be for them to have some backup workers that can fill in or when they go on vacation or something like that. So we're not filling in, yeah.
I don't disagree with that.
I didn't know we were filling in for that.
We do, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Can you talk about the necessity for the crossing guards? Do you still think they're necessary with most parents having somebody there to put their child on the bus?
Sergeant Kaufman runs the crossing guard details for me and I would, I would defer to him because he actually works with them. And I would, I would believe that, I think they're on work, high traffic areas, like I discussed, Morris Avenue, Broadway, I think Route nine ninety-three in Lormer. So I think a lot of these areas are high traffic, high concern areas. You know, I'm seeing it on, on like the slower secondary railways, so. But I would defer to him. So if we want to, we want to go down the, the line with this, I would have, I would have Sergeant Kaufman here to talk about that in detail.
And one of the reasons I asked that, I'm seeing some of the school buses in the morning, they'll, they will pull over the double yellow line. So nobody, nobody can pass them anyways, so.
Yeah, so we can have him here and he can, he'd be able to answer all of your questions on where we have them posted and all, all of those things.
But you also have the unknown of what are children going to do? You know, you can say, yeah, the bus is blocking the traffic, but that doesn't mean a kid's not going to try to run out there. I, I, I think their crossing guards are pretty much necessary.
No, and I agree. And I, I think they, they wear the reflective stuff, they have a stop sign, they actually get out on the road and stop people, stop the cars when I've seen it. I think it's a necessity too on those high traffic areas.
I agree with their existence, but I'm going to also agree with Virginia. I don't think it's a cost this township should endure. I think it's a school district should be paying for it. And I think this should be up for a vote through the board.
All I know is that there's a lot of parents standing with their kids to get them on the bus now, just the way society is. But I appreciate the information.
Jeff, I guess if we want to explore that, I'm in favor of that. Only thing I maybe voiced my concern is might want to tread lightly because we put that back on the school district. That number might jump twice and we're all paying for it if we're paying for it through us or through the school district. So at least when we're paying for it, we have somewhat the control of it. If we hand it off to the school district, that number might triple.
And if it triples, it goes back onto thirty-one thousand constituents, which is not, I, I'm tracking exactly what you're saying and I know exactly what you're saying, which it's almost an excuse my French, damn if you do, damn if you don't situation. It shouldn't come to that, but it, I can see Zach where it would literally come to that. I don't think that it's right and I'm probably going to upset some school district people. I don't think it's right for the school district to put that financial burden on us and take away from our police who should be out on the roads patrolling, doing what they need to do. But, you know, I'm grateful for Billy Kaufman out there doing what he does and the fine work that he does. But to throw a responsibility onto a township that belongs to the school and not get reimbursement from the school. I don't, and I know these children are our responsibility because they're in our township. But why is the left hand not feeding the right hand, or so to speak? Or if I'm saying that wrong, somebody correct me, but it just doesn't feel right.
Jeff, I think you have some direction, maybe we can explore options.
Okay. Even if we can possibly go back and say, look, we have this line item that X amount of dollars, can you give us half? Give us, you know, we'll continue backing up with, with the police, but give us the money for it, give us some money for it. I mean, I'd be willing to at least split it, you know, and rather than, you know, taking the whole bor, the whole burden of it.
I mean, I'd rather look at the whole burden. I would agree to that, something like that, but I mean, we've had the whole burden for how long here? And the, the school board, the school district hasn't cared about us having the whole burden. I mean, it's their, it's their, it's their burden, I feel. But I mean, if worse comes to worse, I would actually be in agreement with you too there, Jason. And again, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we can vote here to send us back to the school, but that doesn't mean they're going to take it over. I mean, we have to sit and talk to the school district and see if they will be willing to do that. We can't just say we're giving it to them because they could say, well, we're not funding it.
Yeah, you know, the board can eliminate the positions, but there's no, there's no, you know, equal action for the, for the school board to fill the positions. Okay, public works. The wages of the superintendent, you know, and the assistant road superintendent, you know, have been clocked in at the two percent placeholder. Hourly workers, again, that's part of the ASME contract that we're currently negotiating. The seasonal workers, you know, we keep them if we can ever get them to come. They, they provide a great benefit for summer labor. Workers' comp, the fringe benefits for the full-time workers, overtime for, for mostly plow drivers. You know, as you see, that's kind of a up and down line item. We had a pretty good winter, you know, the last two, you know, last year, we were about fifty-two thousand dollars, so we, you know, we did pretty good. But you never know, a worst winter can bump us, so we want to make sure that line item is there. But I think we, the ninety-five thousand dollar item has been a historical line item, but I think only maybe one or two times in the last decade that we've came close to ninety-five thousand. So I think it's safe that we can pare that down. Safety equipment, you know, supplies, you know, for our workers. Office supplies, you know, there's very little office supplies, but there are some in the public works department. Topsoil, we, we, you know, we, that's generally always been an under budgeted line item, so this kind of come up to a historical budget figure. And the most use of topsoil is especially after the road program is to backfill curbs and to backfill any work that we do. You know, it's not like we're making yards anywhere. We're, we're using that topsoil as fuel and to bring yards back after, you know, we do work around there. Oil, gas and diesel, that's a big chunk and that's, you know, that's one that, as we discuss, capital, you know, in the near future. You know, our public works and police gas and fuel do worry me a little bit because we are a hundred percent dependent on commercial entities to give us our fuel. So if all of a sudden, you know, Sheets and Get Going, everybody's shut down in the marathon, we have no fuel. You know, for a fleet our size, not to have a fuel depot is something that I, I really feel we need to look at because if a snowstorm shuts everybody down, it's bad enough, you know, stores and everybody are having problems getting employees. If twenty-four hour services go to twelve hour services, you know, we, you know, we may have a problem filling up. So we, you know, that may be something we need to look at for, you know, a major capital investment is to put fuel tanks and a fuel service system into our public works facility. But it's not budgeted in the general fund budget this year.
Jeff?
Yes?
What if we were to get with these fuel companies, the ones that you talked about, have a special pump that has a special key for people in the township? That would be for the vehicles rather than create our own fuel depot?
We're still dependent on commercial and then we'd have to give the fuel key, you know, to the fire departments, EMS. We'd have a lot of fuel, people going to Sheets or somewhere, to a store and to have one dedicated for all of our services, I think is, it still doesn't relieve us that if the commercial place doesn't turn it on, if they don't turn the lights on, you don't have the pumps on, we then don't have access. I just think it's something we have to look at is, you know, are we strategically aligned to provide our services if, if, you know, there's a major storm, if there's some type of major downturn? Okay, general expenses, six thousand dollars is kind of a historical view. Repair and, repair and maintenance of equipment, you know, public works pounds their equipment by design. So, you know, there is a lot of repair and maintenance because, you know, it's not a country club. Small tool, in minor equipment, you know, they do break a lot of shovels and brooms out there, simply, you know, doing the jobs that they do. Radio maintenance, keeping the radios going, rental of machinery, there's, you know, there are, there are, you know, pieces of machines that we could never, you know, afford to own. But, you know, we rent them for the projects. Training, you know, we do try to get training to our guys as much as possible. And salt, that's, you know, that's kind of a line item that, you know, goes, we thought we had it pegged because we had more, we had salt in every nook and cranny of our public works facility going into this winter. So we kind of bumped our budget down and we, we wiped through that, you know, very early before the new year. So, you know, we did have to buy our, kind of our normal rate of, you know, supply of salt to replace even the large reserve that we've had. Now, the, the CoStar bid has not been released yet, you know, so I don't know how much, you know, a ton of salt costs. Like I said, you know, it costs roughly about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, or fifteen thousand, a hundred fifty thousand to go around the, to make a, make a pass and get, get everything done. So we're, we're going to- and get everything done, so we're gonna try there at 400,000. Now, in the past, the salt line item has been in the liquid fuels. What we've done is we took that out of our liquid fuels account and then augmented and supplemented the road program through $500,000 in general fund. What that does is, you know, it kind of creates an audit, an audit problem, because there's a lot more work to get ready for the audit for the software through liquid fuels. So we put, since we are paying more out of the general fund for road program than we were for salt, we put it back in the general fund and just used 100% of the liquid fuels for road program. That means it's basically one receipt, one contractor to audit. You know, I will say there is an option, this isn't a recommendation, this is ethically, I'm gonna give you an option. You could put that $400,000 back into the liquid fuels and reduce the road program by 400,000. If that, it's not, like I said, that is not a recommendation, it's not good practice, but you know, if you're looking for $400,000, that is, it's bad practice, then it sets us back, but it's something I will just put on the record, you know, I feel ethically I need to tell you that. Calcium chloride, you know, that's a lot of, that's bag salt that we kind of get out to the fire departments, do sidewalks around, you know, around our facilities, and it's not road salt. Highway supplies and signs, you know, signs continue to get more expensive as they keep changing their legal requirements of a conforming sign, and we have a lot of roads out there. Traffic paint, you know, $1,500, sometimes we buy it, sometimes we don't. Traffic line contractors, $20,000. What happened is we did double the work two years ago and didn't do any work last year, so we're gonna kind of catch up to, you know, where we are, because there was kind of a, so that's $20,000 for line painting, that'll happen at the end of the year after all the road program is done. Traffic signal maintenance, it's lower this year. The last two years, we paid, this year and last year, we paid the 20% match for our signalization program, so that's why that was a little bit up. And we did change contractors and we're having a much more efficient billing system and a lot more efficient billing and cost-effective billing through our new signal contractor. So however, you know, once a signal goes in, we own it, we maintain it, we replace Storm drainage supplies, 95,000, that's kind of bringing that line item to, you know, basically what we do. That's, you know, every time we have, you know, a water complaint, a stormwater complaint, we need to buy the pipe, buy everything to put it in, that's where that comes out of, and that, that lenon is probably gonna keep going up every year, simply because as, you know, we near 50 years on a lot of our developments, the tin whistles disappeared in most cases, and you know, water's popping out, we have to replace it. Concrete, I mean, that's just, that's a part of doing business from our inlets, for repair work, you know, concrete is what it is. Road construction and repairs, that's our portion, you know, of what we do for the paving that we need to do locally outside the road program, some of the seal coating comes out of there, or not the seal coating, the crack sealing. And that's, you know, again, the cost of doing business, in the past years it's been higher, because that's where we've been supplementing the road program out of general fund. We're not planning to do that this year, we're planning to do it all out of general fund. Stone, you know, that is what it is. I mean, you can't lay a pipe without stone, you can't do most work without stone, so we, you know, some years it's high, some years it's, you know, moderately low, but 80,000 is probably a good budget number. Bridge maintenance is $1,000, you know, there's not a lot to do. Capital projects, we have, the one project, we have a basin repair, I think, is it on Shannon, Bob?
Shannon Street.
Shannon Street. We do have a cover that we need to replace, and I'll give you some pictures of that for the budget, it's deteriorating, especially, that's about 177,000, and we're gonna put in, we always have another 100,000, because we never know what's gonna happen, we always have one major project pop up. So that's the Public Works Department. Any questions for Rich on any of those expenditures?
I have a question. You were saying about putting up a substation for gasoline?
Excuse me, ma'am. Public's had a chance to speak, it's not a give-and-take back and forth, if you have a question, maybe you could ask it at the end of the meeting, because you didn't have a chance to speak earlier.
Okay.
Okay, Parks Department, Recreation Director Salye, again, an intern is, you know, suggested for that department. Supplies and postage, at $1,500. Program supplies at 67,000, we've kind of been bopping that down, you know, to probably hit more historic levels, you know, it hasn't been 72,000 expended in a while, but you know, in talking to Director Miller, we kind of agreed that might be a good place to start right now. And also, you know, as we're trying to find, you know, different ways to pay for some of the activities, to try to make it a little bit more just, but at the same time, keeping the activities where they are. Miscellaneous at 1,000, professional services at 15,000. What we do there is every now and then we need a Parks consultant to come in, we've had some work done, some engineering, our geese, I believe, come out of that area, our geese patrol. So that's, you know, it's been higher in the past whenever we're doing the comprehensive park planning, so we're getting that down to a little bit more manageable level. Advertising and printing, we're bringing that line item down, again, as we go to more and more social media, more and more electronics, less handouts at the school, while at the same time keeping our, you know, advertisements for our seasonal activities. Dues and subscriptions at $600. Training at 1,500. Then you have the wages for the park people, summer part-time employees, which everybody seems to line up to work at the parks. Workers' comp, the fringe benefits, the overtime. Operating supplies for the park and rec program, seed, you know, seed, et cetera. Gasoline, that's, you know, that's one that, you know, again, we budget a little bit more higher. Repair machinery and equipment, small tools, that's all kind of basically in line, the utilities for the parks areas. Repairs of land and buildings, trying to, you know, maintain the upkeep, especially of the pavilions and the structures. Playground equipment, you know, that line item is coming down, you know, as we've got most of the major playgrounds are gonna have the surface, the rubberized surface, so now it's just gonna, upgrading the equipment and kind of keeping up with it. And the rental of equipment, again, there's certain pieces of equipment, it's more value-oriented to rent for that single use rather than to try to buy it. So anything in Parks and Rec for Director Miller? Community development, the Westmoreland County Transit Authority, donations to maintain our bus stops in the township, and our community demolition program at 25,000, which is probably more of a average than, you know, the 40,000 has been budgeted there over the past couple of years. The insurance, this is, you know, we're seeing, this is the one area that we're not seeing cost control, you know, our insurance rates do seem to keep raising every year, as do our deductibles. The unemployment compensation, yeah, that's coming, you know, that stays pretty good, because we generally don't lay people off, so we don't have unemployment claims other than some of the seasonal crossing guards. Our property, fleet liability, you know, that's 275, however, you know, that is in part of the pool, so we do get, you know, a majority of that back, you know, as, I think we're in the 45% return back on the insurance trust. The public officials liabilities and errors and omissions, you know, that's one that's coming up as, you know, that keeps increasing, as do our deductibles for our employment's practices. We're up to $100,000 on, you know, one of our employee practices, insurance. Workers' comp, you know, that's, we've basically taken that out through all the departments. Law enforcement liability, you know, industry-wide, it's kind of like standard 10%, we're seeing now on the renewal, simply because of, you know, the last couple summers, so that's nothing we can do. We have very low, if any, claims on our law enforcement, but we're seeing, we're being part of the industry trend of clicking up 10%. Bonds, that's basically my treasurer's bond for both the township and liquid fuels. And our insurance deductibles and costs, you know, that had a raise because our deductibles are raising, just to cover that. And, you know, we're trying our best, we work with our broker, we try to do risk management as much as we can, but you know, when you go to a market, you're subject to the market and your past loss runs. Employee benefits, that health insurance, that is our retirees' health insurance, and basically retirees' health insurance automatically doubles whenever you go from active to retired. Life insurance for retired people, our PMSR, that is our share of our minimum municipal obligation for our pension. Medical evaluations, that's for new hires. And the 65 Special is a supplement that we provide contractually to our employees. The tax refunds, miscellaneous tax refunds, that kind of got bumped up, because we took the Act 172 from 250 to 500, so, you know, we will probably double our usage there. The state tax refunds, the majority of those come from the Act 172, and then every now and then you do get a reassessment or an overpayment that we have to do. So those, they went up a little bit, but we anticipated that, and we, there's no transfer to capital reserve. So this is, this is the snapshot right now, I mean, we're gonna, you know, wind down again, but our anticipated revenues, I told you, is roughly 13,000, let's say 13,500, $13,500,000. You know, our budget, you know, as it is right now is $14,640,000. So that gives us an anticipated deficit of $1,158,000, $1,160,000 as a deficit. Now, as we'll talk about, there are provisions in the Rescue Act to replace lost revenue, and you know, I'll go over how the form, we could, if we wanted to, next year, bring up to $730,000 to, for lost revenue that can be used to offset general governmental expenses. It can't be used to put into savings, it can't be used to pay existing debt, and it has to be used to do operationals and expressly, you know, public safety is one of those. So that could bring our anticipated deficit at right now to 430,000. But like I said, that's right now, we still have to work a little bit more, we still have to get the union contracts, we still have to get our major commodity prices. So that is our blush here in, at the end of July, early August, without a lot of knowns. But what I'll say is, a lot of those line items, we've kind of winnowed down that, to go lower in a lot of, especially the operational ones, it's gonna be, it could be an artificial adjustment, but I'm, you know, I think as the board and the directors, we want to work together to get a budget up to what you are comfortable with.
Jeff, should there be this infrastructure bill passed, would we, do you think that we might be able to take advantage of that somehow and lower down some of our other costs?
I would say no, because the infrastructure bill is going to be to build projects, so we don't have any building projects here, other than basically operation and maintenance. So I think if that bill, if it does pass, and I don't know enough to talk, but it'll be for new projects. So that'll just be bonus, so to speak, it won't be, it won't offset our operations.
So you don't think it'll, would be able to be used for paving projects?
No, I don't think paving local roads, I don't think that's gonna be part of it.
Any other questions or comments on the budget?
Yeah, Jeff, I do. And Chief, this goes to you. Going back to the Police Department, second page on the general fund budget worksheet, go to the second page if you will, go all the way down to the bottom where you see Police Department. You'll see line item, let's say it's just one up from the very bottom, you see, at the very bottom of the second page, you see dispatcher overtime, you guys see that? Come one up, and there's fringe benefits.
Yes.
0141014053, and then you just go up 1, 2, 3, 4 from that fringe benefits, and you see another fringe benefits, but it's a different line item, 140 now becomes 130.
Yes.
What's the difference between the two?
One's for the dispatchers, one's for the police officers.
Thank you.
See, salaries and their stuff, the dispatcher's salaries and their stuff.
Oh, there is. You like that, Chief, don't you?
Oh, he is right.
You just went like that, and then they knew it. Son of a gun, thank you, Joe.
The next is that start of the discussion is on the rescue fund, the American Rescue Plan update. As you know, we got, our allocation for the township was $3 million, roughly $180,000. We did receive, oh wait, just before I go back on the budget, I did want to say, I was pleasantly surprised when I was double-checking my historical facts, we are, at the end of July 2021, roughly $768,000 ahead on our capital reserve fund, on our general fund surplus than we were a year ago. So, and even the clerks are saying, you know, we're probably down about $20,000 a month in processing bills, because of the cost of, but that was the first time I've ever seen that we've actually been a little bit up on our reserves, so it should bode well towards the end of the year. So as we get to the Rescue Act update, you know, the $3,180,000, we did receive the 1.6 million, we do have that in the budget or in the bank, and we'll receive our second entrenchment July of 2022. You know, as you know, it is restricted, I don't want to go, you know, support public health, address negative economic impacts, replace public sector revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, we kind of discussed, that's to bring people up to 150% of the average wage, invest in water, sewer, and broadband. Now, a lot of those items are good, but they're really geared into entitlement communities, they're getting tens of millions of dollars. You know, we're, I know the city of Johnson got almost $26 million, you know, Greensburg, you know, Penn Hills got, I think, $30 million. So there's a lot, there's a lot of huge projects that they can actually go out to reach. You know, for, you know, municipality like us, we get $3 million, which is a lot of money, but it doesn't spend a lot. And I will say that I've been trying to find the rules, because the rules are funded, it's that, well, spend the money, then we'll get the rules here. But the one part about this is that you spend the money, you're audited, they come up with their final rules, because we're all in interim final rules, and then if you spend it outside the project, or what is approved, or they deem approved later, you have to refund the money. So I think, you know, I'm taking a very conservative approach to what to use it for. And as I've been reading, reading, there's still not a lot out there, other than EPA has chimed in on stormwater projects, that they view that the stormwater project to have a public benefits would have to have a clean water component to it. So you're not gonna be able to pipe stormwater, you're not gonna be able to put inlets in and get it there, you're gonna have to somehow reduce, you know, you're gonna have to, you know, make the water better than when it comes in. So that kind of takes out a lot of work of what, you know, a lot of people thought stormwater projects were gonna be, because now it has to have a clean water component. So, you wanna say something?
Yeah. Would it be helpful to some of our areas that have been flooded to maybe install, like, say, rain gardens, because that would tend to purify water resources?
Well, I mean, you know, rain gardens are fine, but for the areas that are flooded, I don't think they're gonna make that big of an impact, because rain gardens are kind of small areas, and to use the funding for that, we would really be dressing up an area and not really preventing, doing flood, you know, we're working with the Corps, waiting for the Corps to get back to us, especially on those areas of, and then it's, you know, are we improving public infrastructure or private infrastructure with rain gardens? I think if we'd had a large, a large, you know, parking lot or something, we can put it in, but I think, you know, for that, the rain gardens are approved, that does filter, but I think for a large stormwater to make impact, that wouldn't be something I think we should undertake on small case-by-case basis.
Is there anything that we could do as a developer is adding more homes and creating more runoff? I know they're controlling that with their plans, but is there anything we could do to maybe double, since we maintain those retention points?
Probably, you know, where we could come into that is taking a look at our CEDO and taking a look at our zoning warrants, is what are we requiring as best practices for stormwater? Instead of trying to address it here, is there, we can do that through the land development So what I'm looking at is, as we've talked about the preliminary uses, you know, what we have is, we had the upgrade of the HVA system, which is expressly in the interim rules of upgrading public building circulation systems. We talked about, you know, our building plan and to open up our building socially distanced, especially the police department using the planning administration, and then there's a revenue replacement component that allows municipalities to, and governments to replace lost revenue per a formula. So, I mean, to go through the HVA system, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, we're able to use that to pay for the upgrade, because that's, we don't have debt ready to do that, that alleviates the need to take, you know, an $800,000 note for 20 to 30 years at $25,000 to $35,000 a year. to $35,000 a year in debt service. You know, this kind of cleans it up and do it, realizing that, you know, I had a mayor a couple of years ago always telling me, when the federal government gives money, they think they're doing a favor. However, they're just basically funding what you already paid. So they're just giving you your money back to spend. So we have it, and we have to spend this money. We can't put it into savings, we can't invest it. We basically have to, we have four years to obligate and spend this money. So the building utilization, I think we talked about that with, you know, Sewer Authority leaving, we have an opportunity, especially to give the police breathing room, as they're one on top of each other. And this kind of opens it up that we want to take the Planning Department to the large billing area, the manager and assistant manager up into the suite to get us out of the bullpen, as I call it, so we can have a little bit of privacy and, you know, not be, you know, right there in the crust of everything. And then bring the Police Department, let them expand to work areas in the Police Department, bring the detectives and the chief up to the second floor Planning Department, and that kind of opens up our operational areas. And I'll move the Parks Director out of the hallway, and I'll move Jonathan out of the file cabinet closet that he's working in, and allow him to, you know, actually operate in an, in an office environment, not in a closet. And at the same time, allow us some rooms, we can actually bring interns in, because why we haven't had interns for a few years, we have no room for them. We can't physically put them anywhere. And, you know, and what we want to do is, as we talked about, we don't want to buy everything new and have a Taj Mahal, we want to sell just about everything we can. There's a few pieces of furniture, we know, once we move, they're going to turn to powder. They've been there for 30 years, they're not going to move. And, you know, you know, the total cost of this upgrade we're looking at is about $235,000, with the majority of it being the Police Department having to take their, their area, you know, buy computers, so everybody has their own computer service, their own terminal, planning and zoning. The bill, the, the space up there needs some work, the carpet's shot, and the wall coverings are peeling. Administration is probably the cheapest at $15,000. But that is one recommendation to be able to do that. We accomplish the goals of opening it up for socially distanced workplace, and at the same time, we get the efficiency of having a, a very proficient and a very professional working environment. That's, you know, that's, you know, a recommendation. Now, the lost revenue is kind of an interesting perspective. The lost revenue is based on, you know, 2019's revenue. And it's, John, you go back three years to get what your growth rate is. So you, you take your 2016 budget numbers divided by the 2019 budget number to get your average growth rate. The, the standard that the government is using is you should see 4.1% growth rate per year. Whenever, and then you take your revenues, and this is all of our funds, other than Liquid Fuels Fund, and then you take out, so you, we have to take out like our trust dividends, we have to take out transfers into funds. So this kind of gives us what our actual revenue is. This is our Water Fund, Light Fund. So we had, our 2016 revenues were $13,838,268. Our 2019 revenues were $13,785,410, for our average growth rate at negative 1%. So, since it's less than 4.1%, we can use 4.1% as our growth rate, and then we get what's called our, our actual revenues versus our counterfactual revenues, which was our revenues, 2019 revenues at 4.1% every year. And according to this formula, we could spend $3.3 million out of our 3.2 as lost revenue. And what lost revenue does is, it allows you to bring it in and have very restrict, very loose restrictions on how you can spend it. It's probably the easiest accounting way to do it, because we can do it. And the one way is we can, let's say, offset police wages for, with that $500,000. We can bring $500,000 in this year, $556,000 in this year, you know, because it expressly says, public, police and public safety costs can be done. So for an audit track, they can't come back and say, okay, we changed that. And if you, let's say we do it just to pay down police wages, and that frees out $556,000 for us, which would be a lot less reliant on our surplus, because we know we're probably going to have to dip in the surplus. So here, we could, this is lost revenue that we're giving back, that we can supplant it. And then, you do this every year, and like, you know, as the estimates for 2022 budget would be $730,917 for 2023, we'd be out of money, but, because we only got 3.179 million. But so, because we have a limited, you know, a negative growth rate, which I think we've all saw, that our revenues have not really went anywhere. So this kind of shows it, we have that ability to use that fund. So, you know, right now, my options, as of right now, we have 1.6, 6 million in the bank, you know, to fund the HVAC system. And, you know, it's 747, we're probably going to have a couple of change orders, simply because whenever you're building new, you have none. But when you start ripping walls apart, you start finding things that, like, how'd that get there? So mostly whenever you're doing renovations and retrofits, you do find a few things that are going to need to be repaired. You know, so that's $750,000, you know, budget, you know, the building reconfiguration, you know, we could do that. What you plan to do over a few years, we could do that as one shot. And then, you know, you know, my recommendation is, is to use what, the tool that's given to bring that $556,000 in for this year to alleviate some expenses. And then, you know, because it'll save our, it'll allow us to keep our reserves higher, you know, not have to draw down. And like I said, everything here is explicitly, explicitly in the interim final rules. That gives us a roughly $38,000 balance, and we'll get another 1.6 in June of next year, and then we can kind of see where we're going. But that's, that's my first draft of how to, you know, how to spend this money and keep us operationally efficient and, you know, keep our use of the surplus down.
Any more discussion?
Jeff, you said that, you know, in regards to the HVAC bid award with East-West Manufacturing coming at 747, R&amp;B coming in at 827. Recommendation is to go with East-West Manufacturing at 747.
Correct.
We also paid McKim and Creed a certain amount of money.
Mm-hmm.
What was that, 26, 36?
$26,000.
$26,000. I'm bringing that up because I think that we should not bend. 747,000, that's their bid. If they start opening up a wall, I think McKim and Creed have a responsibility, as does East-West Manufacturing. We talked about this yesterday when we had those two firms come in. I'm all for holding people's feet to the fire. Remember, we talked about if a project gets bigger? Well, it should have been these people's responsibility to assume a little built-in, like, oh, man, hey, we got to tear into this wall. My point is, 747, $747,000, that's a lot of money, brother.
I understand that. But here, here's the difference between an engineer giving you an estimate for a project development, that's their work. Whenever you do building, it's basically called unforeseen circumstances. They don't know what's in that wall. You can't tell what's in that wall without tearing it down. And you can't go and do, you don't know, I'll tell you probably the easiest one, we were doing the pool in Robinson Township. So we bid it out, it's going, as they start excavating, all of a sudden, they shut the entire neighborhood's electric down, because somebody in the past decided to basically run an extension cord underneath the pool and through conduit. Would never know what's there, unforeseen circumstance. You, when you start building an old building, you rip out, you find things that, like, somebody configured 30 years ago, because, okay, I can do this and keep it going. So it's not, I mean, the engineer's fault, it's not, you can't budget for something that you don't know what's there. You budget for the replacement, you know, you're going to put ductwork site in, you're going to do this. But if you find somebody, something that's in there, that's, it's an unforeseen circumstance.
Okay. So let's just say the new guy comes in and fixes that bad thing that somebody did 20, 30 years ago. Is, what, why don't we go after, through the Solicitor's Office, the individual that did the something wrong 10, 20 years ago?
Who did it?
Well, we should have record.
We did, we did, Eric, but the previous board, the previous board took a settlement with the company that did the previous HVAC system.
Yeah, I remember that.
And I was against that, because I didn't want the money that they were going to settle for. I just wanted a working system. I didn't care what the money figure was. And the board's pleasure at that time is we settled for the money.
300?
Um, I think it was like 240, I think.
Two something, yeah.
Okay.
We, I mean, we could look up the number to give you the exact figure, but I didn't care about the money figure. I just wanted a working system. I just wanted to come in and fix it. I didn't care about, you know, what the money thing was, just come and fix the system. If it was $50 to fix the system, I don't care, you know. And that's why we, we're in the situation we're in now.
The reason why I'm saying what I'm saying is, ultimately, who winds up paying for all of this stuff? And I, and I think we all know the answer. It is the constituents. The constituents are the township. I want to make sure that the good people of North Huntingdon Township don't get stuck, because longer the days that it should have been over since the beginning of mankind, where we're sticking our people. And I think that somebody has to own up the responsibility of doing things, rather than saying, oh, that's okay. You know, we've got, you know, 31,000 people that'll come up with the, with the money. That's what I'm saying. I just really want to protect our constituents. Because ultimately, you know, if we can't make our bills in the township, who has to pay for it? Well, the millage starts going up, the taxes start going up. When the taxes fall on who? Oh, that's right, 31,000 fantastic people in North Huntingdon. Now, all of a sudden, everybody's having to fork over money. That's what, that's the only reason why I bring up what I say. I just don't want to see somebody that made a mistake 10 years ago, knows darn well, you don't put an extension cord under a swimming pole, we're going back after that silly construction company that did that 10 years ago. And guess what, guy? You're going to pay it. Because we're not going to stick the people.
And probably to your point, that's why we went out, had the independent study done, had the design, didn't have a design bill, didn't have a contractor come in to design it, to evaluate it. So we, I think this board has done the judicial steps to be able to protect the, the consumers and the taxpayers. That's why we're getting a system that fits. And, you know, but, you know, anytime you rip out a wall, you never know what's in there. And that's, that's why it's a lot uncommon.
I understand, but I was in construction for some years, and we always built into our estimate, a possible, uh-oh, what's behind that wall. And then, we, it's called, when we hand the homeowner the final bill, they go, hey, you came in under budget. Yes, because you know why? We didn't have any oohs behind that, that wall. That's what I'm saying. And that's, would be nice for the people to know that, hey, we're getting money back.
All right. Good job, Jeff. Any other questions? Thanks.
Okay. The next is Consulting Engineers' Discussion. We met with this, with the two finalists last night, and, you know, free to have the board have any discussion, any questions.
Any discussion from the board? All right.
Okay. The next item is Goffey Road Speed Limit. This was requested by Commissioner Atwood.
So it was brought to my attention from a resident that lives on Joseph Street, which is adjacent to, you know, stop sign on Goffey Road there, that the speed limit's 35 on that road. We have since built a school very close to it, and we have a very dense neighborhood section there, residential section, at the front part of Goffey Road. And after talking to the constituents, some of their neighbors, one of which was here but left, we think it might be better to have that at 25. If not the whole road, at least from Clay Pike to McKinnon, we feel would be, you know, good to protect for the kids from schools and all the extra traffic. And that's where the residential area kind of blocks, you know, spaces out a little bit and gets it, gets to be a little bit safer for the higher speeds. Being that it is a state road, I know there's steps that we have to go through. But, you know, first up, wanted to bring it to the board and go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem exploring the option, I think, too. I mean, Chief, maybe we could get some speed signs up down there if there is speeding issues, and maybe we could get some data from that, we could go back to the state. Maybe that'd be a good starting point, to see what kind of speeds we're actually getting down there.
Also the stop sign at Joseph Road and, and, yeah, Goffey, sorry.
Joseph and Goffey. I sat there for about 10 minutes, and 11 people came to the stop sign, and only two actually stopped.
I'll pull, I'll pull some historical crap out, too.
Yeah.
Because I know that that would be a, and, and, we'll have that on.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Thank you.
Okay, I just have two additional things before we get into our business. One is, our co-in and associates who are doing our K-Wide, we did the agreement to receive about $34,000 last week. They since settled again with Comcast, that they're going to pay us for the Netflix. So we're going to, I'm going to bring a new item that we're going to get there, almost 39, a little over $39,000 next, because they're going to pay us for the net. They, they won that argument. And second, and thirdly, is, you know, we totaled one of our police cars, one of our new police cars were totaled. We did get the check for that, and we were able to cannibalize and save, you know, probably 80 to 90% of the equipment in there. So we're looking right now, so as soon as we can find one, we have enough money from the total to purchase a new one, we're going to purchase that car as soon as we can find one on Co-Stars. And hopefully, I'll have a motion for next month, or next week. But we do want to get that car back in our fleet.
And how was our officer that was injured in that accident?
Still off.
Still off?
At least for another 30 days.
Wishing her well.
I'll pass the word to him.
Thanks, man. Appreciate it, Chief. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have for the two.
Plan and engineering topics. Director Fonzie?
Yeah, I'm going to switch over here on the screen. This was an item that we actually discussed at the June work session. It's the Tuscan Hills Phase 5 and 6 subdivision plan. And the Planning Commission had approved it, got to the Board of Commissioners' work session, and the item of the cell tower and proposed Phase 6 came to be. And the developer had not accounted for a fall zone, essentially. It was, it was configured on a pretty standard lot, and as the fall zone would go, it would fall into the street, it would fall into both neighboring properties on the side. So have had limited contact with the developer in regard to this over the last few weeks, but I did get updated plans. Here's, here's the old shot. So this is what they were proposing. The red star is the tower, and the setbacks, you could see, are very limited. They're required to have the full fall height, which is 99.25 feet. That's the height of the tower. Since it's a monopole, it's not designed to snap off at any point. So we have to account for that with our setbacks. So I did receive updated drawings on Monday. So this is, this is Phase 6. And I want to go back to the old Phase 6. So there's old Phase 6, there's Sabato Drive coming down. You could see it's relatively straight, smooth. And then, now you can see the jog. So it's kind of jogs down to the south a little bit. The lots on the western side of the street get a little shorter, the ones on the eastern side get a little longer. They still all meet dimensional requirements. Here's a close shot. So what they did was they provided 100-foot radius. The red triangle is the tower. And as you can see, that red circle is the 100-foot radius all the way around. So they're, they're providing 100 feet to Lot 602, to that property line. They're providing 100 feet to the edge of the right-of-way, which is the front property line. And same with Lot 604, they're providing 100 feet to that neighboring property. Now, in the back, they had 90 feet, which we really can't hold them to, because that property line was already existing. So that was there as the tower was there. So they still have a 90-foot fall from there. So it's just, it would be on to the, the neighboring property to not, you know, get too close to that. But, but in my estimation, this sort of cures that problem. He was able to not lose a lot. Again, he reconfigured, some of them got smaller, some of them got bigger. So everything else had been satisfied. They'll still have the standard conditions, the sewage planning, I think you'll see in the memo, that I think there was five total conditions, engineering comments from KU Resources. But as far as this hurdle, I think they've overcome that. So for next week's voting meeting, I would recommend that, that the board consider approval for that. Any questions with this, this new configuration? That's all I have.
Thanks. If you can click out, Brian, I have one more to put up.
All right. Old business. Jeff, I believe we have the
Yes.
Jeff, I believe we have alcohol and the parks permit ordinance?
Yes, I, at the last, at the last meeting, it was, it was approved for publication of the ordinance for an alcohol permit. And what I want to do is just kind of show you, you know, just, you know, if you have any questions on the ordinance that was posted. You know, we did incorporate every other parks amendment, which we, in talking to Director Miller, probably sometime early next year, we're going to incorporate all this into a new parks ordinance because we have about five amendments that we know of. So just, you know, the parks permit, as we went down, as was discussed at the board, $100 permit fee, $200 deposit. We've agreed that the, the permit is going to be probably fluorescent pink. That's going to be stapled onto the, or, you know, we're going to put a, a way to have it affixed to the shelter so everything can be seen by, you know, the police officers. 20 years, 21 years of age, beer and wine only, no glass. Applications should be responsible for leaving the facility clean as they found it. All facility rules. The whole harmless agreement, we actually have a whole harmless agreement on our permit now. So we're just going to have our solicitor kind of revise it to include alcohol. Manager has a right to withhold any of the deposits. Proof of homeowner's insurance or a liability policy for the event. Liability policy for the caterer, if it's a, if it's a catered event with alcohol. $100 permit fee for each vendor, if it's a sponsored event and you have multiple vendors with alcohol. So if you have alcohol limited to 20-foot perimeter for pavilions. And we, we'll set up a alcohol zone for the individual vendors. No less than, we have to have that permit no less than three days in advance, I mean, business days. So people are going to be coming in at, at 4:00 on Friday for a alcohol permit for Saturday. So that's, you know, that's what we discussed. That's, you know, the ordinance is up, it'll be on the agenda next week for board consideration. I just want to make sure that everybody had a clear, concise how we put the terms into the ordinance.
Any questions on that? Any further board comments tonight?
Not, just need a motion. Motion adjourned?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor by saying an aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, seven to zero. Meeting adjourned at 8:32.